The following was recorded in front of a live studio audience at the Studio 21 Podcast Cafe. This is the United Podcast Network.
The following program is closed captioned for the thinking impaired.
By tomorrow, I will rule the world.
You think he's gone? He's not gone. That's the whole point. He's never gone.
Is this some radical new therapy?
You see?
Having a little technical difficulties. Give me one minute.
We've got plenty of music.
It's a good song.
Yeah. I heard it's one of the favorites of the new mayor of Methuen.
By the way, he thanked you for that. This is the ringtone on his phone now when I call him.
Yeah, he wanted it.
He really? He changed it? Yeah. Alrighty. Hi, how you guys doing? Tom Duggan here at the paying attention podcast. Hi, it's up to guys smoke shop here at the Studio 21 Podcast Cafe. And boy, I'll tell you, this is gonna be quite a show. I think just the fact that he's here, doesn't even matter what we talk about. Just the fact that he's here is gonna piss off an awful lot of people and it's usually the kind of people I want to piss off. So, uh, so we're glad to have him here. Couple of announcements before we start the show. I've got a bunch of stuff coming up. Um, on the last Thursday, I think it's the 26th of December, we're going to be, um, having our annual opioid summit.
Yeah, this is the 26th.
Here on the paying attention podcast, gonna be two hours with the police chiefs of four communities. Chief Alan Denaro from Havrell, can you just pull me up just a little? Alan Denaro from Havrell, Police Chief Chuck Gray from North Andover, Police Chief, uh, Jim Ryder from Boxford, and who did I miss? And Chief Joe Solomon from Methuen. And, uh, so our very first show was the last week of December, two years ago. And we had the police chiefs come in for that first show and we had, we talked about opioids. And we were supposed to go one hour, but it was so fascinating, we ended up going two hours. And afterwards, they said, geez, we should do this again. So we've been doing it now. We did it the first year. We did it on the anniversary for the second year. And this year we're gonna do it again. And we're gonna, they've all, they've all been instructed, Ed, to bring in their statistics from the last three years. That, you know, since we started and then go back to two years before that, so we can get a good perspective of before we started doing this, where it was, where it is now. And what's great about it is, you know, Havell's a big city, lots of crime. Methuen's a medium sized city with lots of crime and Boxford's like a cow town, right? I mean, you know, if there's a cow in the road and they have to call a cop to move it, that's a crime spree in, in Boxford. Uh, and North Andover is kind of like in between, right? North Andover has some crime because it borders Lawrence, but not as much, not as little crime as Boxford. So it's great to have the diversity of the four different chiefs here. Uh, and before I get any nasty emails from Lawrence, we didn't ask Lawrence to be here, uh, because Lawrence wasn't really kind of part of this. But at some point, we will have Chief Roy Vass come back on and talk about what's going on in Lawrence. The cameras, the reduction in crime and all that kind of stuff. Uh, Heroes in Our Midst, Volume Two, should be, uh, out on the streets in January. We're, uh, almost done, but we have a lot of like editing and stuff to do. Um, made a cameo appearance. I don't know. Did you see the new video?
I did see the video.
Did you see that? So I made a cameo appearance in a rock video, uh, produced by Red 13 Creative here in Massachusetts. Uh, Jenny Teeter, if you go to, uh, youtube.com and put in Jenny Teeter, Daughter of the Devil, I'm in that rock video.
No.
They're at like 20,000 views already.
I was sort of watching it when you were doing political TNT.
Yep.
And are you a good guy or a bad guy? I saw you cleaning out the register.
Yeah, no, I'm getting robbed.
Oh, you were gonna hand the money to the bad guy. I just assumed the worst when I saw you emptying the register.
No, I, I play, I play a store clerk. We taped it at Route 110 convenience store in Methuen. Uh, thanks to Hasmu at Route 110 who let us go in at 4:30 in the morning before he opened. And took us about an hour to shoot all of the scenes. The little girl in that video was just amazing.
Did you grab a couple of scratch tickets while you were there?
I did, yeah.
That seems to be the lucky place right now.
Everybody was worried I was gonna take the money. It was the cigarettes and the scratch ticket that was sticking in my pocket on my way out the door. Uh, and so what else do we have? We've got the Valley Patriots 16th anniversary, if you can believe that, our 16th anniversary bash, March 27th. And, um, we're gonna have a lot more announcements coming up as to who's gonna be playing, but I have to tell you, uh, right out of the gate that we have asked, uh, much to the bemoaning of my bash committee, we have asked John Mallory to come back. And he didn't say yes just yet, but we need people to work on him. We need everybody, everybody, if you see John Mallory, you gotta go over to him and say, listen, you gotta do the bash this year. We miss you. He's been gone for the last three years and we want him, we want him back because he is, he's the bash at this point. Without John Mallory, it's just not as much fun. Sitting to my left, we have City Councilor-elect.
Still sounds weird.
Yeah, Neil said the same thing. Uh, Joel Ferretta. Now, what's really interesting about Joel, before we get into all of this, is that you were, you were like, you weren't the frontrunner at all going into this. You were unknown. Nobody knew who you were. Uh, you'd never run for anything before. I don't think you've really ever been involved in any campaign before, except I think maybe on the Jim DiJugo Jr. campaign for sheriff. I think you.
I held signs for, I've held signs for Steve Sabre. I held signs for Diana Desoglio in the past, but that's the extent.
Yeah, you're holding signs.
Yeah, I've never been, this is my first venture into anything close to this.
So you've got Joyce Campanion, who's a incumbent who was running for reelection, Jim McCarty, an incumbent running for reelection, DJ Deeb, who sits on the school committee, running for city council, and then you, who'd never run for anything.
Right.
And I, I, I think what happened, and you can speak to this a little bit, was that the voters just wanted new blood. They just wanted somebody new and you were the only new guy in that race.
Right, I, you know, but leading up to the primary, I've told this story before, like, and if I finished anywhere between second and fifth, I wouldn't have been surprised. If I came in fifth and it was over that night, I wouldn't have been shocked.
Right.
Then when I came in, I came in in second, I was like, holy, holy crap, it's real, you know what I mean? Right. And then as you knocked on more doors and easily over a thousand, you know, the questions, the first question that came up more often than not was, are you an incumbent?
Right.
And I'm like, never run for office before, like, all right, you got my vote. I'm like, well, that was easy, you know, like, you have any other questions? Nope, good luck. I'm like, okay, but it kind of, it kind of showed where, where a lot of people in Methuen were feeling at that point, where just really frustrated with how the last few years have went. And I think that's what, not just myself, but a lot of the other candidates ended up stepping up and running. You know, we have out of nine, you know, we have five new councillors coming in right now. So I think, you know, you have Neil as the new mayor who wasn't in politics before. I just feel like people needed that fresh start almost and like, all right, let's, you know, complete douching, let's, you know, flush everything from the inside out and start from scratch hopefully.
So totally not gonna touch that. You, um, you, uh, had to deal with, not as much as Neil Perry did during the campaign with the rumors and everything, but I consistently heard, so I'm positive you were consistently hearing, he's gonna be a puppet for Steve Sabre, he's gonna be a puppet for Bill Bryant. They worked together at the CGS, they, they, at the, uh, Crestos Collaborative. Uh, you know, he, he's gonna be a puppet, he's not his own guy. He's, he's a spy for the quote, other side. And you and I sat down at one point and had lunch and I, I looked at you, I think I'm very good at this stuff because I've been doing it for a long time. And I kept telling people, you know what? I think you guys have this guy wrong. I, I think he's a genuine guy. I don't think he's anybody's puppet. I think he's gonna be his own man. And no, 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 nobody believed me. Nobody believed me. Steve Gillis was kicking the crap out of me on Facebook. Mark was kicking the crap out of me in person. Jana was saying, I don't know. And then at the end of the day, it turns out, guess what was right?
Well, because I, there was no reason for me to do all the work and everything I did to just go there and now just vote along with somebody else's side.
Right.
I spent the last three weeks leading up to November 5th, every afternoon, until it was dark, even after dark, knocking on doors, sending messages, doing all this stuff. Why would I put forth that effort if all I was gonna do is now go sit on the council and do whatever Steve told me to do or do whatever Brian, Bill told me to do? That doesn't make any sense in anyone's mind. You know, I've said that, I said it about Neil, I said about everyone else. I've worked damn hard to get where I am, you know, where.
And you did, you did work hard.
Well, right, I'm even talking before the election to, you know, all the stuff I've done with the youth sports, with lacrosse and the M I C and all that. If that was, if, if this was the way I was gonna go just to do somebody else's dirty work, I wouldn't have put the work in. I would have just stayed, I would have coached, I would have done lacrosse, done all this other crap and just, you know, just bitched on Facebook like everybody else about all the problems. But no, I'm putting my name out there and I'm gonna, I'm gonna stick to my word. I'm, I'm not gonna be out there just to be a yes man for somebody else. And I think you're gonna be surprised about most of these candidates, if not all. You know, hopefully, you know, they'll prove themselves that as well, and I'm confident they will.
Now, you want to hit the ground running in January, um, this transition period that you're in, how are you preparing for? You know, you have a huge budget crisis coming up. You've got a huge issue with the police contract, you've got a huge issue with the schools. We know that they're gonna overspend again this year. How are you preparing for all that? I mean, during the campaign, it's all good to talk about issues in an abstract way, but now it's real.
So the first thing I'm trying to do is just, you know, the Robert's Rules of Order, the municipal code, all that stuff. So Tina Conroy was nice enough to share something with myself and the other new councillors today about a seminar that's going on in, in Worcester late, like the first weekend of December, just for newly elected councillors, Alderman and so on. So I'm gonna go to that. Um, hoping now, you know, you mentioned it, like, yeah, it was easy to sit here during a debate with DJ and Joyce and just say all this stuff. And, oh, it sounds easy. Now I'm hopefully getting a little more information now that I'm actually on, gonna be on that other side of the table. Cause I'm sure that none of us had all the information as, as candidates as compared to being on the council. So, you know, I'm gonna do my homework and I'm gonna figure out, you know, gonna just keep talking to as many people as I can and just try to touch base with as many different parties and try to find out where the facts lie and what they are and then vote accordingly. So, you know, I've reached out to, you know, many people, you know, I've reached out to the chief, I've reached out to Chief Sheehy and I've, you know, talked to union, you know, presidents and all that. And I'm gonna talk to as many people as I can between now and January 1st or January 2nd, whenever we get sworn in. You know, I'm not gonna be, I'm not gonna have, I'm gonna have every, I'm gonna do the work to make sure I have all the information I need before casting those votes. And that's what I ran on and I'm not, and that's what I'm gonna do.
So what is your number one priority besides like trying to put, trying to patch holes in the dike, right? Um, you know, with all the crises, is there anything proactively that you want to start doing, uh, come January? Like your number one priority is to like what, aside from trying to fix other people's problems that they left you in the council, is there anything proactive that you want to start hitting the ground running with?
I, I just want, I want as much, be able to look inside these numbers as much as you can to really find out, you know, where the money's going. Cause I know as soon as January hits, you're gonna get to those, those times where almost every department's gonna come back to the city council and ask for money from free cash because, oh, we overspent on this, we overspent on that.
Right.
I think the, the biggest thing that departments seem to be able to show is, you know, you know, the whole thing with the school department, with the special. No, there needs to be concrete proof of what, why we overspent and how, you know, if it's DPW and it, you know, it's a horrible winter and we have to work at that, well, that stuff, that's fine. But if you're spending just tons of money on overtime because we're short staffed and, you know, just because we're filling spots because we haven't hired people, you know, what, you know, I know the police department's down 10 officers right now. So if the police department budget comes up and it's being issued because now you're paying tons of overtime, well, how we get it, we need to get more bodies in here. So we need to be proactive and get, fill those spots instead of paying overtime. That's what kills most of our budgets.
Right. The other thing that kills your budget is about 60% of your budget is a school department budget. And we talked a lot during the campaign about how the city council under Jen Canaan, she did yeoman's work for whatever anybody might think negatively or positively about Jen. She did amazing work with that budget going line by line so that the people at home knew how many pencils we had and how much we were paying for it. Were we buying it in bulk and could we do it better? And then the school department presented their budget with a line item, with, with no line item, uh, expenditures, gave them a bottom line number, they just voted for it. And so I'm hoping when you guys start in January, you're gonna be looking at next year's budget, which starts in July. Uh, municipal budget goes July to June, um, that you're gonna be requiring them to come forward with line by line, the way the school, the city council did it last time.
I think every department should be held to the same standards. There's, you know, so with your newly elected school committee, hopefully they, you know, they're on board with this as well about, you know, really showing where the money's going and how it's being spent. I think the, the school department, you know, the schools in Methuen sometime, you know, I've been, you know, I, I have three kids, one's been, one went through Methuen High already. She's a junior at URI. A great story about that afterwards. And then I have two currently at Methuen High School and both honor students taking AP classes, so I'm blessed. I'm very lucky. And I was talking to people in the, recently and it's like, you could throw all the money you want at the schools. You could, you could double their budget right now, make it 150 million dollars.
It's not gonna make a difference.
It doesn't make a difference because it starts at home, you know, the school committee and the school, school department have done some great things to make sure parents know to the minute what's going on with your students when it comes to the, you know, the classes and grades and all that stuff. But just throwing the money at the problem's not gonna fix it because if you don't have, if it doesn't start at home, if you don't have the parents and if you don't have accountability on the home side to make sure that the students are doing what they need to do, it, it doesn't matter. So, you know, I kind of got off track a little bit, but every department in the city should be held to the same accountability when it comes to their budget. It should be as open and transparent as possible, so everybody sees where every dollar is going. Because unfortunately, you know, there's only so much money, you know, we're not taking out, you know, there's no more borrowing.
Right.
So they just, you know, they set the tax rates and now there's, you know, so I know the, the rate drop and it's gonna be an average of about 180, I think it was, increase for residential tax income now, taxes coming in next year. All right, well, that's more money. And so how, that doesn't, that shouldn't just open the doors, like, all right, now we got a couple extra million dollars, how are we spending it?
Right.
No, it needs, there still needs to be, there needs to be cuts or, you know, just accountability to make sure we live within our means. And that way now, we don't, we're not spending every, every dime that comes in. We need to be able to put stuff aside, make sure rainy day, infrastructure, so on and so forth. So every department should be held to those same standards when their budget comes to the city council that we're able to see line by line where everything's going, not just, you know, not just police and fire and DPW, like what this present council did. And I agree with you, you know, as painful as it probably was to sit in those meetings at sometimes and to watch.
It was very painful to watch.
It needed to be done that way.
I agree. I agree. And again, I, I, um, and I know it makes a lot of people angry who don't like Jen Canaan, but you can't take it away from her. She did a great job. She ran those meetings line by line and that's the way it's supposed to be. It's supposed to be transparent for the public because these, these elected officials, even though they, they don't, some of them don't think that they vote, that they work for the public, they do work for the public and everything needs to be transparent.
Absolutely.
There's a, uh, a move afoot for a, uh, Steve Sabre's family wants to put a pot shop in. Uh, there's a lot of things going on behind the scenes. Um, no, I'm sorry, let me, let me restate that. It's not a pot shop. It's a growing facility. And so the issue of a growing facility coming to Methuen has become very controversial. There are some people that they don't think pot should be legal to begin with, so they're all against it. And then there are other people who are open minded and then there are other people that want it. They think it's a great thing. Um, what do you think about the idea of a growing facility in Methuen? Where it would be, what kind of things that the, the city should get from? I know they were, they were looking at giving North Andover, when I went to town meeting, cause I live in North Andover, they wanted to put a, a growing facility over on Osgood Street at Osgood Landing. And they're gonna give us $10 million a year. And the initial discussions on a pot facility in Methuen had, Methuen getting nothing. I mean, it was all, we're giving them stuff.
Right.
So what do you think about all that? It's something that you're gonna have to tackle unless they do some kind of sleight of hand before DiJugo leaves.
Well, I was at the joint meeting the other night and, you know, a lot of discussion came up about that. And I felt like the meeting kind of went off the rails a little bit, where there was a lot of public participation, which is great, but it all turned into discussion about a retail facility, which was never on the table.
Right.
It's still not on the table. So the discussion, it was, the zoning was for a, you know, a grow facility, like you said, or a medical facility. And the woman that was there representing the cannabis council, whatever, said, you know, you're not getting anyone at this point who's gonna come in just looking for a medical license at this, you know, at this point, they're all looking to duel duel. They're, they're gonna want a medical and an, and an adult use. Because that's just where, that's how everything's going right now. Most facilities that you see are gonna have a dual use piece, you know, you're gonna be able to get your medical at one side and you're able to go, you get your recreation on a second. So, so to me, what that sounded like is as long as, if retail's off the, off the table when it comes to Methuen, then the medical's gonna probably be off the table as well, where no one's gonna really wanna come in and do that. So now you're left with the grow facility piece. And as long as it's zoned properly and, you know, I think there's plenty of industrial and they had the whole zoning map. I, I think it's something Methuen needs to look at. It's, it, it's not gonna, it's not like anyone's gonna go in there and be able to grab 20 plants and then run out the side door. The security in those places is really tight because that, they don't want that liability.
Right.
The last thing they want to be is that first place that gets knocked off.
And they may be hiring Methuen police officers to do security there. And most people don't realize, like, when they see a cop doing a detail for construction and, you know, you hear that they're making $50 an hour, they don't realize that the taxpayers aren't paying that $50 an hour. The construction company's paying it. Because it's mandated in their contract and I would imagine it will be the same thing for a grow facility.
Right. It depends on if, you know, do they go, do they decide, and I guess that'll come up with zoning and probably way down the road, but how is it secure? So I know we've talked about before, you know, the facility in Lowell has a private security company on site. You know, so I'm sure that was agreed upon when Lowell met with this company and decided, all right, what are we gonna do? And I'm sure each town does that, but that's where us as a city needs to go out, you talk to Lowell, you talk to Hudson, Merrimack, all these other towns that now have facilities. And say, all right, what roadblocks did you hit when you were doing this? You know, what, what worked for you guys? When it came to security, what, you know, did you look at public, using public officers as compared to private security firms? What were the positives and negatives on that? And I think you don't have to recreate the wheel at this point. There's already all these facilities all over the place. So if we get to the point where now like, all right, it's a go, Methuen's gonna look at doing a grow facility in, in Methuen. And we're there, now let's reach out to these other communities so we don't have to keep doing, just redoing work that's already done.
Right.
But I think short sightedness, I think we really need to look at the, you know, being able to have some sort of, you know, comp, you know, people like, well, you know, we shouldn't just take in, you know, dirty money. Well, it's, it's not dirty money because it's, it's a legal product.
Right.
Just because something's illegal doesn't mean it's not coming, you know, you, you opened the show, talking about your opioid summit that's coming up in, in about six weeks. Well, that's illegal. How's that working out?
Right.
You know, so.
It's the same argument with guns, right? Or abortion or anything else. If you make it illegal, people are gonna do it anyway.
Right. But you're not, it's not like you're opening up, you know, the, the pollers that they've talked about. I don't think there's any open in Massachusetts yet where you, where you're gonna get to go in, pack a bowl, smoke it and then stroll out.
Right.
You know, it's not, we're not looking at anything like that. You're looking at just a warehouse pretty much, no different than what you have over at, you know, like a Shaw's, you know, over on Osgood Street, you know, down that, it's just a warehouse. You're not gonna, unless you know it's there, you're, unless you specifically know, specifically know, hey, that's where they grow the weed, you're not gonna be able to notice.
See, I voted against making it legal, making it legal completely. Um, but I lost that vote, right? And so the people who are against the growing facility, I, I think are, it would be like saying, I'm, I don't think alcohol should be legal, so I'm gonna vote against letting a liquor store go down on Main Street. I mean, you can't do that. I mean, it's not based on what you think should be legal, it's based on what is legal.
Right. But then, you know, it is, and then, but that's where the zoning laws and all that stuff come in. I know a lot of people spoke at the public hearing about not wanting in my neighborhood or this or that. Well, there's ways that we can make sure that it's not disrupting, you know, you're not gonna put a grow facility in the middle of, you know, middle of a neighborhood, hopefully. There's enough areas in Methuen where, when it does come in, that it's zoned properly and it's away from, you know, it's away from neighborhoods or any of that stuff, but.
How about putting it on the ballot and just letting the voters decide?
So I, I'd be in favor of that, but now you're looking at, what are you pushing off to November 2020?
Yeah.
So now you push it out, now if you, you push it off to November 2020 at this point. I guess it depends on what you're putting on the ballot. If you now, if you're gonna say, we're gonna do a grow facility, we, you know, the council, but now we're gonna put retail and medical on there. I, I think that'd be fine. I think if you just continue to push the can down the road, at least on something, at least on the grow where you at least bring in some in tax revenue because we need something that's not residential at this point. I think that, I think definitely that could be on, that should be on the November 2020 ballot, whether you, you know, bringing in, whether you want retail and medical in, in Methuen. Because 2020 is gonna, you know, same thing in 2016, when this first was on the ballot, it was a presidential election, so numerous people came out.
Right.
And you know, in 2020, the way everything is right now, you know, there's gonna be many, that's gonna be a huge turnout as well. So that's your opportunity right there to put that on the ballot if you wanna put a, you know, recreational slash medical facility. I think that's the time to do that. But I think a grow facility should be something that the people in Methuen should, you know, look at and really embrace at this point to bring in additional revenue without having to worry about, you know, the concerns that a lot of people have when it comes to, you know, product, oh, they're gonna buy it and then they're gonna sell it to kids. No way. It's way too expensive.
Right.
When you go in the store, they're not gonna buy it in there and then come out and sell it to anyone else.
Right.
But, you know, the downfall is it's definitely boosted the black market. So, you know, now if you were buying something for, you know, 20 bucks, now that it's legal, now all of a sudden that's, that same product's 45, 50 bucks because it's 60 inside the store.
Right. Uh, we have a question from one of our readers. Randy says, did Joel think, uh, that there will be a smooth transition from the old God to the new God? Uh, as we are seeing some resistance from the outgoing councillors?
Um, so I've met with pretty much all of the incumbent councillors at this point. I have one more meeting, I'm meeting with Jimmy tonight. I haven't heard from any of the outgoing councillors. So that's my, that would be my biggest concern. I spoke to, um, to Jess on the phone. I'm like, what would be very helpful would be, you know, maybe one or two councillors getting the five new ones together and saying, hey, let's sit down, you know, there's not a quorum, none of that. But like, hey, kind of what I said before, hey, these are the things that I thought would be easy when I walked in and they weren't.
Right.
You know, hey, when you hit the ground day, on day one, these are the things you really need to. So I can say for, like, right now, the councillors that are, that are still staying on, I've had contact with all four. So, and I've also had contact with all the councillor elects as well for some point. And I think we're, the new councillors are really eager to learn as much as we can. So that way, we know there's gonna be issues that come on our plate as soon as we get in. And we wanna be able to be as prepared as we can. So I feel confident that as we get closer to that, that even some of the councillors that are not staying on the council, that they'll, they'll be helpful as well. I, I've known Jen for years. Her daughter Farrah and my son Max are in the same grade and known them forever. I'm very confident that if I have a question and I reach out to her, that she would be more than helpful. So.
That whole election, that whole mayor's election broke my heart. I love Jen Canaan. I do. And I know a lot of people that, uh, that are friends of mine don't, but, uh, but I always loved Jen. And, uh, that whole, that whole election, the divisiveness just broke my heart. One of the, if not the biggest elephant in the room is the police contract and maybe other contracts. Um, whereby they are now gonna be going for arbitration in December. And, uh, at least according to the president of the Police Superior Officers Union, Greg Galant, uh, arbitration is in their contract and it's final and binding. And we have Jim McCarty saying publicly, no, it's not. So you've got a little bit of a conflict there. We'll, we'll find out, I guess, who's right. But you're gonna be coming in, if, if the arbitrator in December, before you take office, decides to give the police anything, like even if they say, no, we're not gonna honor the contract, but we think that Jim DiJugo retaliated illegally, so we're gonna give them a million or a million five, there's no money in the budget for that. Which means when you take over in January, before you even can talk about moving anything forward, you gotta find a way to come up with that money, either laying people off, raising taxes or some other creative way. How do you plan on handling that?
I don't know, maybe is it too late to ask for a recount and see if DJ made up those 16 votes? I don't know. But, um, it's, it's one of those questions that, not lying, I don't know. Like, I have no idea how that process is gonna play out in, in a month. And then if that does, I, I would imagine, let's say, I think it's December 16th, December 16th to the 18th, I think it's those three days. Not sure how long it takes after that to come back. I would, I don't know, like, so it's a three day hearing. I'm not sure how long after that it takes for the arbitrator to, you know, officially.
It's usually pretty quick.
Okay. So I would imagine if anything comes down short of the city's 100% right, that there's gonna be an, oh crap, all right, let's get together because we're gonna have to figure something out.
Right.
So I think that's where hopefully that current leadership that's in there now would work with the incoming mayor and the incoming council and be like, all right, this is what we have to, you know, because there's gonna be a lot of us in that room that have never had to dealt, deal with anything of that magnitude. So it's gonna take more than just, you know, myself or even just Neil or anything like that. Because there's gonna, it's gonna be a huge thing. It's not just moving, all right, well, we're just gonna move this a little bit here and it'll be fine. You're looking at a big number if something does come back in the favor of the superiors at that point.
Have you sat down with Neil Perry and talked to him about any of this kind of stuff?
I haven't talked to him since the election.
Oh, really?
You know, um, I've, I've assumed he's had his own, you know, between him.
He's very busy.
You know, he's, you know, I'm sure, you know, I, he told everybody that next day that he was gonna go over, you know, put in his papers at Raytheon. He's got a whole transition thing going on. My, my phone's been nonstop for two weeks and I've, I've met with everybody.
Trying to bother you.
It's all right, you know, but I'm sure when time comes, if, you know, that we'll have some sort of discussions, but, you know, eventually, not eventually, but like, you know, there are branches of government for a reason. They are gonna be separate. So I'm sure we'll be cauldron, there'll be discussions, but eventually, there's gonna be, you know, not a huge, there'll be some talks and conversations, but I'm sure there's a lot of it that's gonna be separate because of the, you know, because of the branches. You know, so, but, you know, I'm sure he, he's paying attention just as much as any of us. You know, watching to see what happens here because he's gonna have, that's gonna be his first issue he's gonna have to deal with as well.
Right.
So I can tell you, it's nothing that any of us are looking forward to. You know, it also depends on who you talk to. You know, you talk to one side, we're 100% winning. You talk to the other side, we're 100% winning. Like, somebody's.
Someone's wrong.
Somebody's wrong.
And we're gonna find out.
Exactly. We're gonna, you know, and eventually I think, you know, I think a lot of us are just kind of like, what did happen? I think eventually, it's been two years of this and, you know, I've only had to live it from this part for the last, you know, since I pulled papers. That's the, you know, are you incumbent? Yes, no. How do you feel on the police contract? And that's all we've heard now for two plus years. And well, no matter which way it goes, I'm sure there's a lot of people that we can, if we can figure out a way to move forward after this arbitration hearing, get everything settled and just move on. So we don't have to worry about this, we can focus on other issues. I think that's where everybody's looking at, at this point.
See, if I had my way, and I know I'm the only person on the planet who feels this way, but if I had my way, I'd give, I'd give every cop $250,000 for a salary. These guys are running into burning buildings before the firefighters get there. They're pulling babies out of, of crashes on the street during, during accidents. They're, they're running toward the bullets when everyone's running away from the bullets. And as far as I'm concerned, I'd give them every friggin penny that they wanted. Uh, but realistically, the town doesn't have the money.
Right. And that, that's the problem. Like, I think you could, you could say the same thing about firefighters, right? You could say the same thing when, you know, same thing. Buildings on fire, they're running in while everyone else is running out.
Absolutely.
And they are heroes. Those are jobs that not many people do and those people that do step up and do that deserve the utmost respect and should never, you know, when they retire, should never have to worry about.
Right.
You know, especially when it comes to the health concerns, we should be able, those guys should be taken care of. But unfortunately, as a municipality, you don't have the funds to be able to do that.
Right.
So it's, it's that delicate balance of how do we make sure they're taken care of well enough that they are compensated for all the stuff that they do, which is heroes work, but then also not make sure that the rest of the city doesn't fall apart around it. If you pay your police and fire, like you said, the 250,000, now what happens? Now you're DPW guys, two guys with a shovel, you know, just trying to fill the bottom, you know, but it's, it's that tough balance.
I say just take it from the schools. Cause I, I look at, and, and I know this infuriates all of my friends when I say, because most of them are on school committees or involve the school system. But I look at the product of these kids coming out of the schools today and. And listen, I, I know that there were good teachers. Don't email me and say they were good. We know that there were like five maybe. Some, there were some good teachers. But at the end of the day, I'm looking at the product. These kids graduate, they, they can't, they can't put a sentence together on paper. They can't read a traditional clock. But they know all about global warming and abortion and transgender bathrooms, but they can't fill out a job application. And so when I look at the product, I'm like, well, why are we just shoveling more money? From my memory, the police department last year was funded. The school department overspent by four million, and then the council gave them more. Like, they borrowed four million to, to, to fill the gap and then gave them more money. And I'm sitting there, I was watching Steve Saber that night, making, tripping over himself to make a motion to give the schools more money because there were people in the audience yelling and screaming for the schools to get more money. And, and I'm sitting there going, but why? No matter how much money we throw at it, these kids still can't fill out a friggin job application. I mean, when, when they, when they can get it right, when they can teach math, science, and history the way they're supposed to, and English, then you wanna give them more money? Then fine. Show me that you guys are up to par, that, 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 that the kids are graduating and that they've got a grasp of reality. Then fine, we can talk about giving them more money, but.
I was talking to, um, a principal, I was at a train, like a school safety training the other day, which is unbelievable, like the stuff that, you know, that you'd, you know, talk with the FBI and, you know, retired police chiefs about, you know, school safety, active shooters and that stuff. And I was talking to a principal during the break. And it struck, it really struck me because my wife's a special ed teacher. The amount of administrative work that now teachers and administrators have really takes away from the focus in what they're able to do in a classroom.
Right.
You know, and it's, you know, I have heard numerous teachers, you know, my wife included sometimes when she gets frustrated, she's like, this isn't why I got into this. And I think it really frustrates teachers a little bit. You know, when I was in high school, I went to Everett High and it wasn't all academic. You know, I, I took a home ec class and you took wood shop and all these other things, and at least you were a little more well-rounded. I love what Greater Lawrence is doing. I love, you know, the techs. And I think we really need to, like, not every kid needs to go to college.
Right.
And, you know.
Smart guy here, Ed.
Well, you were talking earlier, I was, you know, I was listening to the, your podcast while I was driving earlier, and you guys were talking about Elizabeth Warren and, oh, giving away, you know, the student debt, you know, getting rid of the student loans. Why is the conversation ever about the colleges?
Right.
Like, public educate, public college education, from when I went to school at Salem State in the early 90s to what it is now, has more than doubled.
Right.
So you can't just forgive the student loans. Why aren't we looking into our public colleges as well to figure out, why, why is tuition now at this point?
Right.
We're now, to go to a UMass Lowell, it's over $100,000 for a four-year program.
And they still graduate knowing all about global warming, abortion, and transgender bathrooms, and still can't fill out a job application.
I think that's, I think that's a blanket. I think there, there are a lot, I think those are the kids that stick out. You'll see a couple of them. But I think there's a lot of kids as well that go to Methuen High that walk out of there that you wouldn't like, they're way ahead of the game when it comes to, especially the AP program at Methuen High and your honest program at Methuen High. Those kids that are going to college are very ready. You know, my, my, my oldest is a pharmacy major down at URI, show graduated as a doctor at 23, which is insane.
Wow.
And somebody, as an aside, so, so somebody goes up to Dan Chabilla at Market Basket. He had, he had my t-shirt on. You know, you know, you know Joel's on Saber's team because his daughter's in school to be a pharmacist and he's gonna work for Saber in, in the grow facility. I'm like.
The conspiracy is so crazy.
I'll give you credit, cause that's, you know, that's pretty creative.
Yeah, you gotta come up.
I'm like, I'm like, if you think weird, really that, a big conspiracy theory where this is how it all tied together, my kid is not gonna need me to get her a job, trust me. But, you know, I think there are kids that, you know, there are kids, but it comes, it starts at home, Tom. It's, it's that structure of home, you know, where mom and dad, even if they're not together, are just paying attention and making sure that they're on track and doing what they need to do and giving them what they, you know, whether it's, you know, pushing a guidance counselor, making sure you get the support your kid needs at a school and pushing back, you know, on the school departments or whatever, because, you know, it, it's a, it's a business. And they're gonna, they're gonna try to not, you know, if there's a kid who's gonna need services, they may not try to push that as much because they're gonna save money. As a parent, you need to be in there, in that guidance council. So no, this is what my kid needs. You need to be able to fight for that. And then a lot of other stuff takes care of itself.
We've got an announcement though, right? Don't we? Should I do it now or should?
No, that's good. So I'm, I'm fine with it. So.
So, uh, Joel and I had lunch one day before the election, and we were at Butter Bings, which by the way, has not only great pizza, but they've got great subs there too, and the hot wings are pretty good. Um, and I was about to order something, and I love, by the way, when people do this. He said, no, 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 you don't wanna order that. You wanna order the barbecue chicken steak sandwich, right? Did I get it right?
Barbecue chicken cheesesteak, yeah.
Right. So I was like, all right, listen, I'm, I'm adventurous. I'll try something new. It was amazing. And so afterwards, I said, you know, you're pretty good at this food stuff. So why don't you write a foodie column for the Valley Patriot? First, it'll blow everybody's mind, that'll be fun. But also it's something that like, we could use in the paper to bring in some diverse readers, and it's something you're good at. And you said.
Yes. I think, I think it'd be a great way to, you know, to put the focus on local, local businesses, you know. I don't know how much my doctor will appreciate it, but, you know, hitting a couple of different places every week, you know, every month and just writing a little, you know, little blurbs here, there, positives, negatives, and rating them. You know, we'll give them, we'll put them on this, on the scale, one to five beards.
Right, right. Five beards. I love it.
You know, so we'll do that. And I think it's just another way to really put the spotlight on a lot of these small businesses in Methuen that are doing great things that maybe people don't really know about. Butter Bings is phenomenal. Like, never mind the food and the service, just what they do for the community is great. And I think they can't, John and Tanya and those guys there, you know, you can't praise them enough for what they're able to do. But there's other businesses like that as well that I'd love to get a chance to go in there, give them the pub and.
You got Royal House of Roast Beef, and there's a, there's a new, a new breakfast place, Savestano's. I haven't tried it yet.
I've heard good meatball subs over there, so I'm gonna try that. And hopefully, you know, you and I will touch base. I'd love to get a, you know, hit a couple of those places and talk about, you know, Royal. You go in there and you get a, a sandwich dinner, you know, onion rings and the fries and the salad for 12 bucks. I'm like, holy.
Can't eat for, no, yeah. Three days.
Exactly. So.
Yeah, but I hope that you're gonna at least invite me when you go to eat some of these places, because I definitely wanna try that.
Absolutely. So.
So we're still gonna start our foodie column in December. And I actually have another announcement. It doesn't have to do with Joel, but since we've got everybody's attention. I had a conversation with, and the least likely guy you would ever think would do this, with Jim McCarty. And we were talking about his displeasure for some of the things that I write. And he said, he didn't think I was really very balanced. And so I said, well, listen, if you think that I'm not balanced enough, why don't you write a column about Methuen politics? You can write whatever you want. I'm never gonna censor content. I'm never gonna edit content. And he said, okay. So you'll start in December, and Jim McCarty's gonna start his political column in December.
Cause, so I came at it the same way as Jimmy did. Before I got into politics, before I, like, before I got into this race, I wasn't a big fan of yours because of the whole thing that happened with Steve.
Right.
You know, you know, I didn't, I didn't, I felt like I knew what the, your point you were making, but I felt like the way the point was made was way off. But as I got into this race, and it, it comes down to what I've been saying a lot of. I may disagree with people on, on a subject here and a subject there. I'm not gonna, it's not a personal thing, you know what I mean? So you and I've had some conversations as soon as, you know, when I left that debate here the other night. And I felt like it's been productive. And I feel like I've earned what you said at the beginning of the podcast when you said, I don't, I don't get that feeling from him. I know, like, you guys are saying he's on this team. But I've had to do that since day one. I had to prove to people that.
Right.
I'm not who people, the perception is out there, you know, like, you know.
I fight that constantly.
Right, so.
I fight that constantly.
You know, like, I, you know, I felt bad because if I, if it wasn't for Bill Bryant, I probably wouldn't be in the position I am today. He was the one who got me involved coaching Pop Warner with lacrosse and all these programs. So, and then I, you know, with the MAIC and him and I became very good friends, and we, we're still friends. We work together. And then, you know, the election day was tough. You know, like, you and him obviously had your run-ins.
We did.
You know, so.
But I just wanna say, for the record, he screwed himself because he declared war on me on my show after I was nice enough to have him on for the first debate. And he was throwing jabs at me. Then he came on the second debate and he was throwing jabs at me even after I said he was good to kids and I gave him some, I didn't, I, I, I overcompensated and tried to be nice to him because I don't, I don't, I don't appreciate the way he treated me during the Steve Saber thing. And, and then he, and then afterwards, like, he just kept going. And he goes on Tim Wood's show and he's lying about what I said and what I did. And so finally I just had enough and I went after the guy on, on election day. And hopefully I cost him the election. I don't really care if people think that or not. But, um, I also don't take it personal. I, I, I like the fact that he recruited you. I like the fact you guys are still friends. I like the fact that even though you're, are coming on the show, you're gonna participate in the Valley Patriot, that that hopefully is not gonna hurt your friendship. Because I don't hate the guy. I just, I just, he needed to be smacked down, I think, a little bit.
Well, and I think the stress, I think any of us who got into the election didn't realize the amount of work that it was. And, you know, people will tell you, oh, you, you wait. By, by Tuesday on election day, I was toast. I was, you know, sitting at a chair at the Timony, holding a sign, you know, sending 200 text messages and phone calls and reaching out and doing all this stuff. I was toast.
Yeah.
You know, and I was, I was close to snapping, so I'm sure the other guys as well, you know, it's like, you know, using that sports analogy, you put all this work into it and all of a sudden now it's your Super Bowl.
Right, right.
And now you come up short and there's nothing you can really do. You know, you're sitting there on that Tuesday and everything you've done, and now it's in the hands of other people.
Right.
There's nothing you can do pretty much on that Tuesday, except hope that everyone gets out there and that your message got across. And it, it was probably one of the most stressful days of my life. We're sitting at the, we're at the Timony. And the slips are coming out. And we're down 24 votes before the sixth precinct, the sixth precinct comes out. And that's where I live, but it's also where DJ lives. And it felt like about two and a half hours. It was really like 10 minutes. And they post it and I see the number, and I, I see I beat DJ by 40. So it was ea, easy math. And I'm like, holy shit. I'm like, oh, here we go. And like, so my wife and my friend Peter with their Italian up numbers, they look at me, I look at them, and I walk outside. And I'm like, and I, and I call my mom and I tell her, you know, she starts crying. I talk, I call my uncle who.
Mom was happy for you.
Yeah, my, she was up here every weekend. And, you know, holding signs and brought up food. And my uncle was here as well. So my dad passed away when I was 15, but he stepped right in. You know, he was my mom's younger brother, but he was there as soon as, you know, pretty much right after that. He was there and he was, you know, he made me the man I am today, and I can't be more grateful, but called him as well. And then I go back inside and it's like, yeah. And then, but I was like excited, but it's like 16 votes.
Right.
I'm like, do I get excited? And I'm like, I, you know, I don't know. It's, it seems like, it doesn't seem like a lot.
Then there was talking, maybe a recount, and so it's still, even though you're kinda celebrating your win, it's still kind of up in the air, right?
Exactly.
It was only 16.
So like, um, I can't remember the gentleman's name from the Eagle Tribune, came by at Ray Rocks, and he's like, how do you feel? I'm like, cautiously optimistic, I guess. You know, so that next day at work, I'm probably refreshing my emails every 15 minutes, waiting for the email from Mr. Wilson at the, you know, here are the official results.
Right.
So finally the official results came out. The number still stayed at that 16. DJ calls me that night, says, you know what? You know, best of luck, I'm not gonna do the recount, you know, let's stay in touch. And, and definitely will, because him and I differed on some things. He knows a lot. Like, you know, he knows, he knows his municipal law.
He's a smart guy.
He's a very smart guy, and he's gonna be somebody I stay in contact with, and I'm gonna reach out to him as things come on, because I know, he knows his stuff.
In a different environment, I probably would have supported DJ. I've known DJ a long time. He's written for me for a long time. In fact, he and I went to war together against Warren Shaw in Lowell when I had my ship, my radio show was in Lowell at WCAP.
Yeah.
Um, and, and I, and I, if he didn't hate Joe Solomon so much, if he wasn't so biased against the police, I, I probably could have supported him. And I think a lot of people probably could have supported him. But people wanted someone coming in fresh that didn't have all these biases. And I think that's probably what killed him.
I, I, but he did very well, you know, like, he, even though you, like, it killed, it was still.
He was still close.
It was still, it was a very close race. And, you know, I think what happened with, with everything is just, you know, I, you, you're right. It, it came down to people being frustrated with the current state of the government, the way it is in Methuen, and people just wanna change. And you saw that everywhere.
Yeah.
You know, so.
With the exception of, like, the one person who broke out of that mold was Jess, who was an incumbent and topped the ticket.
I know.
And, you know, a lot of people were running around saying, gee, Jess might be in trouble with this anti-incumbent mood. No, she, she, I think people were very informed. They weren't just saying, throw everybody out. Jim McCarty, same thing, topped the ticket in your race. He's a two-year incumbent. I think people were very discriminatory and very informed. I think they watched all the debates. I think they watched.
I hope they did.
Tim Wood. I think they watched, uh, the, they picked up Methuen Life. And I think they were hungry for the information, and I think they were very informed voters.
I think there were a lot. I also, but then when Arthur Hardy pulls 2,000 votes. You, you also have to wonder, there were, there were obviously some people who weren't, because like, you look at that race, I think it was, ended up being 600 votes between DJ Buragard and Steve Angelo. And 2,000 votes were cast for somebody who said in, in August, there was no interest.
Right.
So, you know, with him pulling that number one spot on the ballot, I think really ended up throwing that race for a loop completely.
I think that was an FU vote. I think a lot of voters go in and they say, you know what, I don't like any of these guys. Hardy's not even in it. Let's just throw him a vote.
Right.
You know, um, and, you know, it's too bad because I think he actually would have been a good candidate.
I've had conversations with him, and I, you know, I just think, you know.
He's a hero police officer. I know he doesn't like me, but I don't really care whether people like me or not. He's a hero police officer. I think he would have done very well during the debates. I think he probably could have secured himself, had he stayed in the race, he probably could have secured himself a spot on the council.
That would have been a very interesting five-person race at that point, you know, with, you know, between Jess and Nick and DJ with Steve Angelo.
His problem is he was listening to Boba Blake. And I think that, that's probably what killed him.
Okay.
You don't have to comment.
Well, no, I, I had, I, when I first got into the race.
You don't want Bob mad at you, so.
Well, no, it's all right. I've had conversations with Bob. And when I first got into the race, he reached out and him and I had coffee and, you know, kinda, I think I, I left that meeting, at least he felt the same way about me that a lot of people have, like, don't listen to the noise on the outside and just have a conversation with me and I'm gonna tell you how it is, you know. And that's, I think that's the most frustrating piece about what's happened since I got elected is, you know, there's people out there who are gonna take shots. And I understand that, that's fine. But at least come from a factual point about it. You know, oh, I was, you know, in 2017, you know, with, with Steve Gillis, oh, he was a bully and he started this page and all this. I'm like, no, I said, no one should vote for you. You're divisive and you're not gonna make a good city councillor. And I started a hashtag, anyone but Gillis. And that's what I did. There wasn't a Facebook page. We started the hashtag, anyone but Gillis. Anyone who was a friend of mine got kicked off of Methuen Sound Off.
Oh, boy.
And, but then they went on and attacked me when I kicked off. Well, if you wanna come after me, come after me, but at least come, you know, come have a conversation with me.
See, I, I love Steve Gillis. I just don't always agree with him.
Right. Same here. You know, there were some things that he says are true, but then there's other times where, but at that point, he wasn't, I've, at that race in 2017, he wouldn't have been a good at-large city councillor. And it wasn't a personal thing. It was just, well, if you wanna call who you're gonna vote for personal, that's fine. You looked at the candidates and like, Steve wouldn't have been a good choice.
Right.
So that doesn't mean what he, you know, whatever he does, he runs that page.
I supported Steve, but I don't always agree with him, for sure.
Right. So.
There was a, um, a huge economic development problem in Methuen, uh, where there's a lot of talk about the Loop possibly collapsing uh, under its own weight. We're so close to Methuen, I mean, we're so close to Salem and Hampshire. Um, everybody's talking about, uh, what we, what can the government do? What can city government do? Is there really anything city government can do when it comes to bringing businesses in, keeping businesses in? You guys, uh, the, the county council just went up on, uh, business taxes, right, which doesn't help.
No.
When you're this close. Uh, is, is, I, I kept wandering through the debates whenever the economic developments thing came up, even with the Neil Perry, Jen Canaan debate. And I kept thinking, is there really anything that the city government can do? I'm not really sure that they can.
I think if you have, if you have the infrastructure in place and you have the ability to, you know, let's use Stop and Shop for an example, right? So that's, Stop and Shop's closing July 31st. I think there's a lot of people that feel if that, if that store closes and there's not something else lined up, that, that's the, that's gonna be the big domino that's gonna really take down the rest of that complex.
Isn't that up to like the owner of the mall to like be soliciting people to come in?
Well, it is.
Not city government.
But you, as city government, can also reach out to them and say, hey, what, who have you talked to?
Right.
You know what I mean? Like, it worked together on this. Who have you heard from? Well, hey, how about I reach out to, you know, there's gotta be connections that both people have that maybe they don't have mutually. So, hey, I know, you know, we know this person here, you know, we can talk about, hey, what about a Wegmans or a Trader? You know, working together to make sure that storefront doesn't empty, because the management company's not gonna want that empty come August 1st. And Methuen doesn't want it empty come August 1st. So there's gotta be a way that they can work in unison to try to figure out a way to bring somebody in there. Whether it's a, whether it's a food store, whether it's another, you know, a grocery store, whether it's entertainment somehow. You know, you wanna talk about the Tuscan Village and, you know, what's going on at the Riverwalk. Like, they're putting like a turf field on the top and they're bringing in restaurants and more businesses and that kinda stuff. There's still room. Like, you can, the Loop could still be brought out as a destination, as long as there's enough vision to bring in businesses that will be unique to there that, you know, you're not gonna bring in a bowling alley, because there's one going up in Salem, you know what I mean? So that's gonna be, it'd be hard for a, a like business to compete there, you know.
I hear a lot of people say, and this is not me saying it, but there's a lot of other people saying, that they don't go to Walmart up to the Loop anymore. They don't go to the Loop that much anymore because it's become, quote, Lawrence. That all, all the Lawrence people are there and it's causing problems and they, and they just, they don't want that, so they go to Salem, New Hampshire. Not so much the prices, but.
No, but so the Walmart in Salem, New Hampshire's a supercenter.
Right.
Right? It's, that's just the regular Walmart. So because of my schedule, Walmart does this great thing where you can do all your food shopping on your app and you just pick a time, an hour window, and then they text you and you go there and you pick it up. If they did that in the Methuen Walmart, that place would be packed again.
Really?
You know what I mean? Like, so, but because of the Walmart.
I didn't know that, but I'm gonna be doing that if I can get rid of Grocery Girl, Ed.
Ah, you'll never get rid of Grocery. But she could go pick them up for you and bring them to you.
Yeah, right.
There you go. You can still do both. But I think, you know, so the same thing with the Market Basket that's at the Loop. It's the smallest one. You know, and I think that's what, and then you're comparing that Market Basket to the new one at Tuscan Village or the somewhat newer one near Home Depot. You know what I mean? So it's not the, it's not the, it's not that it's because no one's gonna go to that Walmart. To me, it's not the Lawrence thing. It's a, well, there's a, it's the same product, but it's bigger and there's more variety in Salem, New Hampshire, so I'm going there. So I think if, you know, if Market Basket would decide, hey, we're gonna do the, try that shopping thing and they did it out of the Methuen store, that place would be packed again. And the same thing with the Walmart or something like that, but you need to be able to expand at that point. And I think there's, there, there's not much to expand at that Walmart, you know, or something like that.
What, if anything, can city government do, city officials do to make Methuen a destination place? There's a lot of talk during the campaign about, you know, having some kind of a, a theater like for concerts or something like that. And I don't have any particular idea off the top of my head. But there's an awful lot of talk about trying to make Methuen a destination place because you have a lot of business just bleeds over into Salem. You have a lot of business just goes other places. Um, and there's, there's not a lot of, uh, really good restaurants. I, I know that the, uh, the Mexican restaurant, is it Mexico Lindo?
Me, Mexico Lindo.
I love that place. Uh, you know, there, there are some, there are some good restaurants in Methuen, but there's no real destination places. Uh, is there anything that city government can do to, to bring in some kind of a destination?
So I was at, um, we were up in Portland, me and the wife and I for the weekend and hit a bunch of breweries or whatever. And I was talking to this one, one guy who was the owner. We were the only ones there. And he was saying how, he was, he wasn't in Portland itself. He was like on one of the suburbs. And he said, he's like, the city came to me and said, what do we need to do? You know, we want you here. We want to, we want to capitalize on what's going on in Portland. We'd love to bring you here. So I think those are the conversations, like, you know, if you, if you have, if you have an idea, if there's a business that's looking to come to Methuen that you know would succeed here, that's unique to the area, you know, work with them when it comes to, you know, you know, whether it's a tax break or whatever it needs to be. Work with them to get them here because once they're here and it is successful, it's gonna come over, you, you'll, you'll reap the benefits because people are gonna come, whether it's, you know, I keep going back to the Portland thing, I love that, I love that city. There was an office park. There was just an old office park, but now they transformed it. There was four micro, there was four craft breweries in an office park. So you pretty much just Ubered it there, went to, you know, you'd walk to all these four different places. You'd hit up, you'd hit up all the breweries and then you'd Uber it back into the like central town, like little things like that, like, all right, what can we do here? We are, there's already infrastructure here, there's, it's empty. What could we do here that would bring people? And I think it's just a lot of people being able to come into the room not be, you know, just because my ideas, my ideas aren't always gonna work. But I'm not, you know, just if you're gonna shoot down something that somebody's gonna bring to the table, come up with facts and say, oh, this is why it won't work. We've tried this. And, you know, like I mentioned during one of the debates, I think it was that, um, you know, maybe Hampshire Street, you know, down near Butter Bing, maybe that becomes a one-way. It comes from, you know, from Lowell Street towards 28, you widen the sidewalks, you got some sidewalk seating for the country kitchen in Butter Bing and, you know, get a coffee shop in there and, you know, kind of make it a little more, you know, put some parking where the old Chardis used to be, make it a municipal lot.
Our downtown, our downtown's a, a dead concept.
To me it is, but you can, you can still make improvements, but that's not gonna be the heart of where your economic development's gonna be. Let's face it, it's the Loop.
Right.
Right? You've got 495, you've got the, you got 213 and it's not too far from 93. So you can still do that, do things in downtown to make it more attractive. But ultimately the Loop is where those big, bigger, where the money's gonna come in. So, but I think there's things you can do down there to make it more attractive to smaller businesses and, and just make it a little more, you know, homie and be able to go down there. Because right now you can't get down there. If you had one more business, how are they gonna, there's no place to park. There's no, you know, you're.
I always pray, when I go to Butter Bing's, as I'm turning the corner, I'm always praying there's a parking spot like right in the front and it never is.
No, I end up in that little lot on the corner that it's really tough to even maneuver to get a car out of there if you want, like a Honda Civic.
Yeah. And then, and there's another, um, I guess it's fairly new, uh, it's like a little mini mart. Um, across the street from Butter Bing's down, like right at the, at the corner there, it used to be a hardware store.
Oh, Leon DeBoer, right? That, yeah, that's like, it's a Lebanese grocery store, whatever. I haven't been in there yet. But it looks like, and I know they just came to the council a little while ago to get a liquor license. So they're looking to do like tables upstairs or something like that, but, you know, things like that.
Yeah.
It's gonna bring a couple of people in there at least. It's more than that Andrew Travel train station thing that's old train depot, whatever that is, or, you know, the empty Ronston liquor store, so.
You, uh, we've got about, uh, maybe five minutes left. Um, what is it, what is, what is it that you want to accomplish? Two years from now, we're gonna have you on, right? And whether you're running for reelection or not, we're gonna be doing like an exit interview and saying, and saying, okay, you know, was it what you thought it was over the last two years? Two years from now, when we're having that conversation, what would you like to say you've accomplished?
To me, it's simple because it's funny because somebody asked me, well, the first thing, the first couple of months can really set the tone for your reelection. Fuck that, I don't want to think, I'm not thinking about reelection at this point. Like, the reelection takes care of itself if I stayed true to my word and I did what I said. That as long, I was informed, I made decisions, I explained my decisions. And they, you know, and, and then everything else takes care of itself.
Right.
You know, am I gonna make all the right choices? No, you know, but at least if I'm able to explain myself and I feel like a lot of things right now, people just say yes or no and they bullshit their way through it. No, just, you know, be truthful, say what you, say, say why you're voting for this. And, and then the rest of the stuff will take care of itself. So my, my, my accomplishment would be that I, I hopefully have a hand in Methuen as a whole turning the corner when it comes to either the transparency on the council, whether it comes to economic development, things like that. That's, that's what my goal is to see. So in 2021, you know, that, you know, whether I'm up for reelection or I decided enough's enough, they're like, oh, you know what, at least he was a man of his word and he did what he said he was gonna do. And if that's how, you know, if that's how the, everything goes, I'll be more than happy with that in two years if I can walk out of here and people say, no, he said what he was gonna do and that's it, you know, that, that would be more to me than anything else.
Real quick, before we, before we wrap up, one of the, one of the topics that I tried to push on every debate, because I think it's important for everybody to be talking about at this level, is the homeless situation. If you are a Methuen resident and you've paid taxes your whole life and suddenly you end up homeless, there are no homeless services for you in Methuen. So what happens is you end up in Lawrence. Which means all of the homeless people in the Merrimack Valley are all in one place and guys like Mike Bernard have to like, you know, arrest them. You know, they're breaking into cars just to get money for drugs or whatever. Um, and so I asked throughout the campaign, all of the candidates, if they would be amenable to having some kind of services for the homeless, for Methuen residents who become homeless. And almost everybody said yes. Now you're gonna be on the city council. Um, have you given any thought to how we can make that work?
Yes. So I think like, something I've learned through the debates is listening to yours and everyone else's is it's not as much the city of Lawrence. There's a lot of nonprofits doing some phenomenal work there. So it's city government working with a nonprofit too in Methuen to say, alright, this is what we need, you know, find those, those churches, organizations of the world that do that and go, what do you need from us? Whether it's meeting space, you know, like, so, you know, with Mike, with TMF and that, you know, you guys got, you know, a host, whether it's hosting an event somewhere that's on city property, giving them those supports, meetings, you know, hopefully at some point, you know, maybe it would be financial or just putting them in contact with other people, whether it's grants, whether it's financial support from the city or whatever, but I think that's where city government needs to start working again for the people of Methuen. And those are the services that